Sound check?
Yeah, let's do a sound check. Sorry.
You guys can hear me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, I've got 7:30, so we're starting a wee bit late, so we're all ready to get going here. Thanks, everybody. All right. We go ahead and call it a order, the regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. And with my call to order, I'll immediately pass it then to Ms. Centris Martin, manager, to let us all know how we can participate in this hybrid meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the public staff and, or excuse me, to the members of the board, the public and staff, for joining us this evening for the July 19th regular meeting of Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend online using the Zoom tele-meeting platform, and the main meeting room has been made available for members of the public to attend in person. If you are joining the Zoom meeting tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate your name, or excuse me, please indicate you are here when your name is called. Ms. Nenney?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Okay, Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right, first up, citizens' input. Would anyone care to comment on anything not on the agenda? If so, please state your name, municipality of residence, and try to limit it to five minutes if possible. Anyone for citizens' input? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to approval of the minutes. Up for approval are our July 5th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Entertained a motion to approve.
This is Patty. So moved.
This is the other.
Thank you. Any corrections or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And on to our authorities, boards, and commission reports. And tonight, we're going to have Mr. Bill Keough, and he'll be presenting as the liaison to the Center Region Park and Recreation Authority. I'm sorry, a board appointee, township liaison. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Keough, glad to be here tonight. You should have received in your packet a copy of my report. I don't have a great deal additionally to comment on. If there are any questions, or if you'd like me to highlight anything in particular, I will be glad to do so.
Thank you so much, Bill. I do have one kind of large question, not expecting any answers tonight. You know, the CIP just recently came out. It's gonna be going to COG, General Forum, to be referred to municipalities for comment. I was doing some calculations. Okay, so I'm not great with that. I've also asked for staff backup for these calculations because I'm not, you know, again, great with the math, but it just, it appears that, two things. One, it appears that capital improvement requests, the percent of the CIP for COG this year, it's 87% park and rec. And so I was just kind of like trying to look at that over time and see what's been incorporated from the facility condition assessments. So we know we've got the pools incorporated. We don't have additional phases of the regional park. If you look at the CIP trend over time, that percentage decreases generally, but you don't have a lot programmed in there that we know we have to do. So, my question is, can we look at, because we are now talking about indoor facility feasibility study, right, which then leads to indoor facility, can we get a projection first of the build-out of the three regional parks? And anything else from facilities mapped out over that time is my question? Because there's just, it seems like it's a high number. So in like real dollars, I'm sorry, I didn't put my glasses on, it's a high number in real dollars. So could we, right, it's a kind of a two-part question. Yeah, thank you.
And certainly, I don't have the answer.
No, no expectation whatsoever.
I do not walk around with that kind of stuff.
None, zero.
Rolling around in my head.
It's big, and it just came to me literally minutes before this meeting, based on finance, executive, et cetera, doing the math, so.
Certainly off the top of my head, not quoting numbers, because I don't know those. But one of the challenges, Madam Chair, that we have with regard to your request, as I see it, now, I'm not speaking for staff, but as I see it as an authority member, is the fact that, for example, with the regional, with the pool situation, those are in the ground, they are being used, they are basically fully built out, and the projections are pretty easy in terms of replacements periodically and a lot of those kinds of things. When you roll over to the regional parks, for example, it's difficult in my mind to think about some of those kinds of projections because there has been no discussion or commitment or process for going to Phase Two or Phase One and a Half of any of them. So it's, we could probably have some numbers as if Phase Two and Phase Three and Phase Four were to be built out as an entire phase, but as we found with Whitehall Road, we couldn't even do a full Phase One. And so now it becomes a guessing game. What will and what won't, what can?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
That's the challenge that we have. I don't think, I don't think that's an easy challenge to overcome.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, just based on what I've learned so far in finance, which I'm a layperson, and I'm gonna ask to be checked by staff after I just say this. And I appreciate your answer also, let me say that, and then we can move on because we have a heavy agenda, I have to keep going, and thank you for your service. So I guess my, I guess my thought on that would be, right now, we have agreed to master plans for Oak Hall and Whitehall Road Regional Park, and they both have dollar signs connected with them.
And Hessfield.
I don't disagree for the purposes of not, my understanding is Hessfield, there are still choices to be made about the actual master plan. But let's just, let's just say for argument's sake, these two right now, just, but we certainly could include that, and I would, I would appreciate that, of course. I would want to include them because they're part of the regional parks. But I don't think we have the same numbers, so that's why I'm not including them. But if you look at the Hess, sorry, if you look at the Oak Hall and the Whitehall Road Regional Park master plan, there are very specific numbers for amenities that we've agreed upon, and until that master plan changes, those amenities are intended to be built over time. The exercise by which we put those dollars to years informs the public as to when that will be built, because at this point in time, the last I've heard was not in our lifetime, my lifetime. So I'm hoping.
Certainly my lifetime.
God bless, right here, lots of this happening. Anyway, yeah, so, so I guess, looking at, let's call it $30 million for the build-out of those parks, where does that happen in the next five years? When is Phase One completed and the rest of the intended budget could be looked at? If the answer is, we're not gonna even consider that for another 10 years, that's good to know, because I'll stop talking about revising the master plan, because we'll have to refresh the data again before we revise them. Not that I'm pushing for that either, per se, you understand, there's just implications, is my point. And I'll just leave it at that.
And I agree with you that there are implications.
The data that we have, we know is outdated, we know what percentage by which, now that we've embarked on Whitehall, minus the inflationary situation. So we could apply that inflation minus that, hopefully, and get some numbers. Anyway, big question, don't expect an answer, that's what I've been thinking about in terms of it since getting on the Finance Committee, and just kind of seeing that trend line, really, that was it, and I appreciate the data that was provided to do that, so. Thank you so much, Bill, for your service there. It's, you know, big numbers, like millions of dollars, so.
Absolutely, in fact, you know, I don't know whether I could live with just the $30 million that you mentioned.
Correct, so that's very real.
When I factor in the indoor facility, which is being talked about.
Centralized maintenance, yep.
And the full build-out of both of the parks, recognizing what the costs were just to do the part Phase One of Whitehall, you know.
And then looking at the fire and the need to staff fire and competing priorities. And I really do want to leave it there, only for time, because honest to God, I could talk about it, you know, more. It's important and it's upcoming. So let's continue, and I appreciate your feedback, Bill, I really, really do.
And I think part of my other challenge, Madam Chair, is where is this discussion best had? And I'm not sure I know the answer to that question, especially given the effort that we're going through right now in terms of trying to develop the clarifications for the governance of the entire park and recreation program.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, but I think that we have to set some expectations right now because, you know, right now, we have an expenditure-driven model, and that's relating, resulting in very high costs, and it may be the case that the municipality simply cannot bear that, not that we don't want to and that we want to get combative, but you know, the voting structure, one in five, you know, two in five, majority will move this budget forward, and that could mean Ferguson Township that pays 28% to 30% of the budget, you know, will be on the hook in the future for that. So anyway, thank you.
Well, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure where.
I think the conversation has to happen at the municipal level to set some expectations, and at the COG level to understand the situation of the municipal partners. So that's, that's my basic answer to that, but yeah, thank you so much, Bill. All right, that was some tough intro to a late meeting, but on we go. All right, thank you so much. We only have one special report tonight, we'll move on to that, and that's the ACFR, Annual Independent Audit Report by Baker Tilly, and they're here with us virtually. Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Do a quick sound check here, can everyone hear okay?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, my name is John Compton, I'm an audit partner with Baker Tilly. With me tonight from our firm is Adam Hartzell. Adam is a senior manager with our firm, and Christine Zorer, who is a senior associate with our firm. We've all worked on the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACTFR Audit as it's known. We're coming down the home stretch with that process. We can say we're essentially complete at this point in time. We anticipate signing off on the audit and issuing the document by July 31st, which is the extended due date for that report. And we're here this evening to give you kind of an update on that process. We will, consider this to be executive summary in format. We have a presentation that is probably 60-some slides long. We don't have the time for that this evening, and we're guessing you probably don't have.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes.
Let's do an abbreviated, and then we can do a follow-up if that works.
Hold on, just a second. Please understand, we're here for you folks. If you have any questions, all, just stop us, and then we'll do our best to respond.
John, can I interrupt for a minute?
So I'm working for our presentation.
Yes. Eric said that I'd be able to share my screen, and I've done that in the past, but right now, when I go to share screen, it says that I'm disabled from sharing my screen. All right, thank you for letting us know, we're checking into that, thanks.
Yeah, that's, I don't know who's running the meeting, but they can absolutely do that.
Oh, there we go, somebody did it. Looks like you should, there you go, great. Okay.
Okay, great. So before we get started, just want to take a moment to thank Centris and Eric and the rest of the folks there at the township. We appreciate their time and attention to this process. An audit is an involved process, these folks have their day jobs to do, and we need a lot of information, there's a lot of preparation for it. The hallmark of your financial operation there has always been that it's been a very clean audit, as we call it. So we're appreciative for that, that lets us kind of get in and focus on the issues and do our job without kind of running into issues with the bookkeeping and so forth. So with that being said, let's get into our presentation. Would like to start on Slide Seven, Christine, I'm gonna jump way ahead here. And I'm going to talk for a moment about our responsibilities under this process. There's both management's responsibilities, which is what the township would do, and then there is the auditor's responsibilities, and it's kind of important to understand the distinction there. And I think the information we have there in Slide Seven does a pretty nice job of spelling this out. Simply put, folks, the township is responsible for the keeping of the books on a day-to-day basis, what we would refer to as your general ledger system, and how all of that information kind of accumulates in the form of these financial statements that we'll be issuing here by July 31st. Management is also responsible for what we refer to as the system of internal control over financial reporting. That will be all of your policies and procedures, your internal practices, the way that things are done there on a day-to-day basis. Our job, on the other hand, as auditors, is to gather evidence to support those numbers, and in doing so, reach a point where we feel we have a reasonable basis for an opinion on your financial statements. There are external third-party users of these financial statements. They will go to the federal government, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, they will be available to your taxpayers and citizenry, your bond trustees and bondholders will get these financial statements. So our role in this process is to, number one, we're independent of the township, we gather information, do various audit procedures, and get to a point where we can give an opinion on whether or not these financial statements are fairly presented. So that's kind of the distinction between what we're doing and management's roles. Christine, if you can move along to Slide 13, please. Here on Slide 13, our intent here is to give you a sense as to what we do as auditors. I mentioned, we gather evidence. Some of the areas of focus in this process are mentioned there on Slide 13. For instance, your cash and investments. We will confirm that information directly with your bankers, with your investment managers, and other third parties. It's an electronic process these days. We kind of communicate with your bankers electronically, and they tell us how much money the township has on deposit with those institutions, and we compare it with your records and follow up on any differences. In terms of your revenues, your tax revenues, your monies received from other governments, whether it be the state or the federal government, there again, we look to independently verify that with those organizations. We'll send audit confirmations for real estate taxes, earned income taxes, state grants and federal funds and so forth, and compare them back to your information. On the expenditure side of things, we'll do what we refer to as vouching. We'll look at the underlying contracts and invoices, we'll do analytical procedures, we'll set expectations as to, you know, what we've seen in other similarly sized governments and follow up in that regard. So it's a, it's a pretty robust process. I think Eric would attest to the fact that we're just not kind of kicking the tires here. There's a whole litany of professional standards that we need to follow in doing this type of audit, and we're, we as auditors are audited ourselves. The firm, Baker Tilly, has an internal peer review process, and then once every three years, we're subject to external peer review. So there's people kind of looking over our shoulder to make sure that we're doing what needs to be done in this process. Slide 14, Christine. I had mentioned this notion of internal control a moment ago, just want to speak to what that is and how that's part of this process. As I had indicated earlier, it's those policies, your procedures, the way that you do things on a day-to-day basis. We, we need to gain an understanding of that process, and we do so in planning the audit. And once we have that understanding, we kind of design our audit procedures around that system of internal control. You know, you could indicate that the better the system of internal control, we might tend to test the system as opposed to the balances. The less robust the system of internal control, we might not spend as much time looking at that, but test the balances or the output versus the system itself. Important to note, though, that this type of audit does not involve the audit firm giving an opinion on your internal control. We look at it, if we identify any issues that we feel the Board of Supervisors should be made aware of, we would do so, but that is more so a byproduct of the audit of your financial statements as opposed to our sole purpose for being there. So, and I should note that throughout the audit, we did not identify anything that we feel we need to bring to the board's attention in the form of either a finding or a material weakness or significant deficiency. So I'll pause at that point before we move along in the presentation and see if anyone has any questions on kind of what we do, the rules that we follow in doing this work, et cetera.
Any questions so far?
No questions.
Nope, thank you so much, very clear.
Okay, Adam, if you would, I think you're next, Adam is going to talk with us about certain communications that are supposed to take place between the audit firm and either the audit committee or the entire governing body in this case.
Yeah, thanks, John, and good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here with you. So as John mentioned, there are a number of kind of what we call required communications that are professional standards that we need to speak to at the conclusion of the audit. The slide that we have up here at page 15 really talks about what the accounting policies are, what the rules are that the township follows in terms of keeping your books on a day-to-day basis. And those rules can change from time to time, as the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which sets accounting standards for governments, they've been very active and prolific in issuing new standards here over the last number of years, and they just continually to revise the rules and what do you need to do to keep your books, and also what disclosures need to go into the financial statements. The good news for the township is, in connection with your December 31st, 2021 financial statements, there were no new accounting policies that were required to be adopted. So from that standpoint, it was a fairly quiet year. There are a number of standards, and there's a couple of slides at the back of the handout in the presentation that talk about what's on the horizon that could have some impact or bearing on the day-to-day operations and accounting processes. At the bottom of the slide, we also talk about the fact that there are estimates involved in your financial statements. So while the majority of the numbers are what I'll call a hard number, something that we can very easily pin down with certainty and say, this is what the number should be, there's also some numbers in your financial statements that we can't necessarily pin down with 100% certainty. Christine, if you want to slide over to the next slide there, there's a list of those estimates that are in your financial statements here. So it's things such as the compensated absences, or the sick or vacation times that employees have earned and haven't used that would carry over into a future period. The amount of what that's ultimately gonna cost the township when an employee takes it or gets paid out for it when they separate employment is that estimate piece that you don't know for sure when that employee's gonna leave. There's some estimates involved in this net pension liability, related to, there's a number of assumptions that go in there in terms of what's the market gonna do from an investment standpoint, what's, when, how long is an employee or a retiree going to, expected to live? There's a number of estimates there that the actuaries get involved with, and so that's an estimate that says, here's what we think is gonna be based on the best information that's available today. That number could change in the future depending on what happens with the investment market or what happens with people's lifespans. So a couple of the other things that are listed here, the taxes receivables, we estimate how much of that receivable are you actually going to collect in the future? And that's all based on kind of the historical data in terms of what have you historically collected on your tax levies? And then lastly, we note depreciations, that's the kind of systematic expensing of the capital assets that the township purchases, kind of trying to take the use of a building or a vehicle or some piece of equipment and associate and kind of charging it to each year that that piece of equipment or that asset is being utilized out into the future. That exact lifespan of how long is a vehicle or a truck or a building or a piece of equipment going to last, that's all an estimate based on just industry assumptions in terms of how long a computer is supposed to last, or how long a truck really is good for. The next couple of slides here, and actually, Christine, if you can slide back to page six for a second for me, definitely would encourage everybody on the Board of Supervisors to take a look at pages 17 to 23, there's a lot of information there. What we're talking about on those slides really are the last number of items on this slide, the significant unusual transactions, significant difficulties, disagreements with management, consultations that we may have with other members of our firm. There's really nothing to report here, in that there were no significant unusual transactions, we had no difficulties or disagreements with management, there was no change to what we anticipate issuing in the auditor's report. So it's all good news here, like I said, there's some additional information in those slides on 17 to 23 that speaks specifically to these, but kind of just giving you the executive summary version, there's really nothing to speak to, to point out that would be concerning or relevant to what we need to cover here tonight. So the last couple of things, Christine, if you want to slide to, I think it's Slide 24, as we go through the audit, as John mentioned, the primary purpose, primary focus of the audit is for us to test the numbers and the balances and the disclosures and provide our opinion on the financial, the fair presentation of the financial statements. That's kind of what we call the test function of the services we provide. In the course of performing our audit, there may be certain things that we get involved with that are not directly related to giving that audit opinion. It could be things such as providing technical assistance to Eric in the finance department with putting the financial statements together, and making sure that all of the with putting the financial statements together, kind of making sure that all of the necessary disclosures are included and that everything kind of works the way that it should. There may be certain account reconciliations that we kind of pitch in and help out with. Things, like I said, things that aren't necessarily directly related to providing that opinion, but that flow into it in terms of getting everything to the state where we can provide that opinion. The reason we mention these non-test services is the requirement from an audit firm standpoint to be able to give their opinion is they have to be independent with respect to the entity that they're auditing. It means that essentially we can't audit our own work. And so these things that relate to these non-test services are things that, you know, while we're not necessarily auditing our own work, there are things that we have to evaluate and say, okay, are we still maintaining our independence by, in being able to perform these services that are listed here? And we absolutely can and we do maintain our independence. There's certain safeguards that we put in place, primarily making sure that township management reviews and approves and accepts responsibility for all of these services that we provide. And so as part of that, we do maintain our independence, which is the key piece of all of this. But did want to mention that there are certain things that we do that are kind of ancillary to the audit, not directly related to providing that opinion on the fair presentation of your financial statements. And then the next slide really is more an informational slide. As a firm, we have a lot of information that we put out throughout the year that deals with kind of current development. I noticed on the agenda that later on today, I think there's, you're going to look at somebody coming in to kind of help you evaluate, how are you going to use your American Rescue Plan funding? We have a lot of information. There's a link here on our resource page that can really help you look at that as well and say, what are some things you can do with that money and what are some things you can't do with that funding? So certainly would encourage you to, as you have the time, cruise the website, to look at those and see, is there anything there that is beneficial to you? And certainly if you have any questions or if there's anything we can do there to help you with any of that, let us know. We're here, we're ready to go with a lot of different services. Hey, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christine who walked us through the numbers and the results.
Hi, everyone. I'm Christine. I'm going to kind of walk through briefly a little bit of the numbers here. The financial statements are almost 100 pages, so we're just briefly touching on a couple of things here. When you receive the financials, if you have questions or things you want to reach out, we have our contact information in here, so feel free. But just high level, basically how we look for governments is we really compare your budgetary, your budget to actual. We don't look at, you know, so much as earnings per share and things like that in the government setting. It's you set your budget, we kind of look at what your actual is, why are there differences? Doesn't make sense. Your general fund, you have multiple funds. Your general fund is where most of your activity is flowing through, so we're just going to kind of touch on it here. This is the budget to actual part, which is in your financial statements also. Pretty much the major differences here are really your taxes. Your earned income tax was down in 2020 related to like COVID-19 and collections and different things. So for 2021, you really see that makeup of the payments of the EIT and the continued payments on being a little more comparable to 2019. For your public safety, you had some additional expenditures related to some smaller projects and things like that. Or, I'm sorry, you over budgeted for projects that you just didn't get to yet during the The fund balance at 123121 is about 8.2 million of unrestricted. That's about 246 days of spending, which is deemed healthy. We take your unassigned fund balance divided by your expenditures on the statements and we times it by the 365. So 246 days of spending, if you weren't making any more money to this point, you'd be able to cover your expenses. Your actual revenues were 9% over budget, again, related to some of that EIT collection that I was talking about. And then prior to the transfers, you had 6% under budget with a positive variance in your expenditures there. Just some historical year-end fund balances, just for comparison purposes. You can see your total fund balance here kind of is pretty comparable to prior year. It's not very different. Your capital reserve fund is another major fund with a lot of activity. Last year and this year was heavily the Stormwater Fund project, which you did create that fund, Fund 20, in 2021. It is a capital project for this year, but it will move in to be an enterprise fund next year. So your statements will have additional proprietary statements on them as you're going to start collecting money for those services, starting in 2022. Just some more comparisons for the last five years. We have the revenues by source, your real estate, earned income, local service tax, intergovernmental and other. Again, the big difference here is that is the earned income tax you can see from 2020 to 2021.
And Christine, if I could chime in there for a minute on the earned income tax?
Sure.
Baker Tilly audits a significant number of earned income tax collectors in Pennsylvania, and that was the trend. In 2020, earned income tax collections were down significantly. In 2021, there was a really nice bounce back from what we had seen in 2020. Interestingly, the more metropolitan-type counties saw a more significant increase in earned income tax, whereas the more rural counties, the increase there was less, say maybe 1% to 2% in a rural county versus 4% to 5% in a more metropolitan type of county. And most municipalities and school districts, in anticipation of their earned income tax being less than what it had been in prior years, budgeted less for it. So hence the favorable budget variance at Ferguson. And similarly, we have seen that elsewhere. I think that budget variance was about $1 million favorable.
Yep. And then we just have the pie charts here to kind of show what makes up most of your revenue receipt, which is that earned income tax for over, you know, 50, it's 57% of it. 63 in 2021, sorry, 57 in 2020. Your general fund expenses, how they're broken out, we kind of do a pie chart here too, to see your public safety is the biggest chunk of it here. Different projects that you're working on and your safety and things like that take up a decent amount of it. Okay, the accounting changes, I think Adam's going to take this and wrap up the presentation here.
Yes, so as I mentioned earlier, there's a number of standards that are on the horizon that will have some varying impact. There's a list of them here. Don't expect you to know what all of them are. The big piece that is kind of rapidly approaching is this lease accounting. That's effective for the township's 2022 financial statements. Unfortunately, not something we have to deal with right this second, but I know we've already kind of started the process of evaluating what leases does the township have with Eric? And we'll continue to do that here over the next couple of months. After we get the audit done, we'll continue to work with Eric to take an inventory of what those leases are. At this point, I don't think we were thinking that this will have a huge impact on the township, but certainly something we want to take a look at and make sure we kind of have well in hand before we get out to the end of the year and roll over into the 2022 audit, just to, we don't delay things further down the road. I would encourage you, if you're interested, slide 38 has a little bit more information on lease accounting and some things that you should think about and be aware of here as we rapidly approach the implementation date. So with that, we appreciate your time and I'll turn it back over to John just to wrap things up.
Sure. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, everyone. You know, I always feel that an audit, there's two stories to tell. There's kind of the technical debit and credit side of things and, you know, was the bookkeeping done properly and are all of the disclosures being there and accurate and so forth? That was very well done in this situation. The other story is what the financial statements tell you and, you know, the financial condition of the organization and the results of its operations and so forth. Your township is well situated. You've got a very sound general fund, fund balance. There's not a lot of debt there, you know, so this is something to feel good about, this audit.
John, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Further revenue for the ARPA fund, does that mean that the revenue was not included in 2021?
Correct.
So there's $1 million that was not counted in our revenue for 2021?
That's right. That's a good point, Eric. The township received those dollars. Just given the nature of the accounting rules there, you need to incur eligible expenditures before you can recognize that revenue. So as the township undertakes eligible projects, you would incur that expense and at the same time, recognize the associated revenue. So at December 31st, 2021, there was about $1 million sitting on the balance sheet as what we refer to as deferred revenue, which is a liability essentially.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, any questions? All right, further thanks. Really appreciate your attention to detail and thank you so much, staff, and all your support in this. All right, okay, let's see, let's go ahead then and move on to our COG and Regional Committee reports. First up is Climate Action. Oh, thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
We move quick. Thank you so much. All right, first up under.
Thank you all. How do we move?
First up under our COG Committee reports, we've got the Climate Action and Sustainability No one was in attendance for Ferguson Township at this particular meeting. It was also a work session and there were no virtual options to attend. Sidebar, we did discuss a little bit about that in Executive Committee and just encouraging that that option being present for all when possible. I will say, I did follow up with staff, Pam Adams, she was very helpful. I think the main topic that they did discuss, which we're going to be hearing more on, is the dashboard for the Climate Action, I know, the dashboard for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So Patty's laughing because I really do like dashboards. I talk about Steve Baer's Dashboard for Fire frequently, so look forward to seeing that. But we do want to really make sure that we keep an eye on that moving forward because that is a collaboration between municipalities and COG to meet those goals that we've all set. So we want to make sure that they're attainable and that they're, you know, something that we can all do. So, and that's it for that. In lieu of any questions, we'll move on. All right, Public Safety Committee, Patty, that was.
Yes, my report is in the agenda and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
All right. Next, Finance Committee, that was me. That was just last week. And our main topics of conversation, let's see if I can read my own writing here, were the COG Capital Improvement Program. I talked a little bit about that earlier and just, we're going to be provided an opportunity to comment on that, what we're going to want to look at, I think, I mean, we're going to look at whatever we want to look at. But one thing I think we're going to want to look at is the trends. We just kind of want to make sure that we're understanding what the trends are, do they make sense? Are there things that need to be incorporated in that to get more of an accurate reflection? So that's going to be important. The other thing we covered is parks, along with those rising capital costs, they have, you know, rising staffing costs, but they're also really wanting to move forward with that mobile concessions. So they talked a little bit about that. They did a very nice document talking about the mobile concessions. I'm still looking at the numbers in there, trying to get my brain wrapped around them. To me, it kind of looked like in the budget that Joe Vigilone kind of sent to me of concessions income, it sort of looked like we had something different though when I'm reading there. So I need to follow up with that. But it's important too, because that's really moving fast. So we have to, we have to be careful because there's multiple reasons why. You know, staffing is very difficult right now in the restaurant industry. And, you know, this is something that, we already heard about staffing difficulties in parking rec. They feel like they've resolved them, at least for the pool with the increased pay that we're offering, which is good. But branching out into a whole new area, when there's still a lot of staffing in the restaurant industry, issues in the restaurant industry, not really sure. And again, wanting to kind of get those numbers to understand return on investment versus need to replace. So I kind of thought maybe the numbers I was seeing was the return on investment is proposed maybe, let's call it eight years, and the need to replace is at 10. So if that's the case, then do we really want to embark on that now? So anyway, more on that. So, I don't know, it's kind of a big, it's kind of a big decision. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out that we talked about is a conversation about whether we should, as municipalities that participate with a regional COG, provide fund balances at the beginning of the year versus maybe the COG getting a line of credit for expenses that are unanticipated. That's the way I understood it. This conversation has been evolving for some time with a different appointee from Ferguson Township, who's not here, Steve Miller, who talked to me a little bit about it. At that point in time, there wasn't really this line of credit thought and I don't know if at that point in time, that we were all in all agreement, that we wanted to move forward with that. So I have some questions and I'm going to follow up with our staff to really be able to, that are, represent us on that. But I hope it's not expected for this budget season, is what I would say, and I'm really not clear on whether it is or not. So maybe we could follow up with that. Like, when is the expectation for that to occur? So, Long Winded, don't have a report in the agenda because, you know, last hour meeting is on Thursday and this agenda goes out the next day. So any questions? All right, then, Executive Committee met today and still also no report in the agenda. We set the COG General Forum meeting for next week. We set the agenda for it. Again, we're going to pass the CIP to the municipalities. Can't really think of anything else in particular I want to point out right now about the Executive Committee. Any questions about upcoming General Forum? We talked about, something's going to be on the agenda, we talked about getting some protective equipment to protect our fire equipment, because it's really hard to get fire equipment now, so we're, it's a good strategy. So we're going to do that. Other than that, nothing of note. Any questions? Okay, Facilities, Patty.
Again, my report is in the agenda. If you have any questions, I guess the only thing I would highlight is that the, at the time of this meeting, there were three applicants to replace the position that is Lou Brungartner, which I think they're calling it the Facilities Project Manager. It was sort of renamed. They were like three applicants, but as of now, the position was still open as they were taking questions and inquiries to those candidates, so.
Great. Patty, can you, as we move forward during CIP and Facilities, that thing I was talking about to Bill earlier, could we try to get that incorporated somehow? Three things, would it be three things? Numbers affiliated with any master plan that we've agreed on as a region into the planning document in some manner? And I would, I have in the past recommended to them, like, the method that Dave Myviker taught me about just like a subsection. Like, if it doesn't fit into the first five years, there's a subsection that you can use that says, items that we need to think about that aren't in CIP. I'm sure that's not what the title was, but.
I think it was a narrative.
There's a little narrative. But there were numbers that were known to be very, you know, very soft estimates, the softest of soft estimates. But it was helpful to everybody just to get on the same page, like, oh, there is a thing called a Park Hills Drainage Way and it's millions of dollars. How about that? It's not right in there. Then we get to talk about when we should put it in there. So it's a first step in that dialogue. Anyway, Facilities, when I get to really thinking about the CIP, and I promise I'll stop here, is that I really realized that, you know, Parks has a lot. Parks has a lot of the percentage of COG facilities as reflected by 87% I think in the CIP. And that's all run through the authority, right? And not necessarily the COG committees in the same way that we run other things. So as you're there, looking at those facility things like you did with the pools diagnostics or whatever, planning documents.
Right.
Getting those into the CIP and then also those further down the road looksy estimates. So, thank you. I just, if you can work on that as a rep, that would be the next wonderful step in this really great progress that COG has made on this document. I mean, I have to note, they've really done some great, that staffing section, that everybody should take a look at that. It's a very, it's a brand-new section, back to finance, very well done, and it gives you an idea over time that staffing is the companion to those facilities then.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, wrapping that up. Okay. Human Resources Committee, speaking of staffing, you're up.
We actually was canceled.
All right, there we go. Easy enough. Okay. All right, Staff Reports. Any questions?
Oh, well.
Oh, sorry.
I do just want to say that, you know, it's been brought up in HR Committee meetings as well as with the supervisor of us looking into our, looking into our pay and what we pay our minimum wage workers within the township. And 15 is minimal. Honestly, 25 is decent, but just pushing those types of things and we commit to that. So I just want to put that out there. You might hear some of that in the near future. Like I said, we have been talking about it within the Human Resource Committee already and then the board's interested as well.
That's great. That's great. I know here, at one point in time, we did a bit of a review. We have some data on that here, so I'm looking forward to having that conversation at the regional level. Great. All right. Next up, back to Staff Reports, questions? Anything to highlight? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our unfinished business. First up, we have Discussion of Prioritization of Policy Items, Projects, and Work Items. And it'll be introduced by Manager Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the work session held on June 14th, staff introduced to the board and introduced, and I would say recommended to the board for their consideration and exercise to prioritize some of the policy items and projects and work tasks that have been recently mentioned and discussed either at a regular meeting, a work session, or part of the operating budget that's been approved for 2022. As it's been referenced throughout the year, as my time as interim and now Township Manager, there's an ongoing interest to just continue to manage competing priorities. And so rather than staff continuously trying to do what they think, what we think is best at our discretion with guidance and direction from the board, we thought it would be ideal to put together a work plan that was blank for each individual board member to provide responses. We did receive two written responses. I later had a conversation with the board member who may this evening also want to share some follow-up commentary with the board. Provided with the Agenda Packet is a copy of the ranked items that were part of this work plan. And then it's open for discussion. I may also suggest too that the board may want to receive add any verbal request for staff to add in. And perhaps we have a conversation when Supervisor Strickland is here to allow for, you know, the board's prioritization after reviewing all individual responses that have been provided to staff. So I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Sounds great. All right, thoughts? Fun activity? All right. I only have one thought.
Okay.
I took that as a no from you two on thoughts. I may have read that wrongly because I am kind of trying to be quick, so if I keep speeding through, somebody stop me if I'm wrongly.
When you're talking to her.
Can't hear me?
We can't, we can hear the noise, we just can't understand the words.
How's this?
Much better.
Fantastic. All right, thanks for speaking up. All right. Yes, my one thing is it may be like a subcategory under something that's already in here. But just like a recent conversation about this project made me wonder if we need to call it out. So the project is the painting of parking spaces and no parking curb flagging, whatever it's called, that Public Works, when they apply the paint and the no parking designation. Very clear identification of where the legal spots are in Pine Grove Mills. The legal safe, you know, visibility is all good. We know where they are. My understanding is that's just waiting for the board to call it a priority. And like there's funding or staff, time, whatever that, yeah. So I kind of thought we already had called that, like that in terms of the mobility study in Pine Grove Mills, I would say that's the most visibly interactive, low-hanging fruit that we could possibly quickly and easily do that would really promote business use there. People have given me feedback about like not knowing where to park and it's dark and that kind of thing. So can we add that to the list as a specific call-out? Is it already sort of an assumed thing? What would we want to do? Do we want to put in the next conversation to get consensus? Yeah, I think that's a great question and, you know, if Dave Magricker is still on the line, I would even yield to him to see if that's already embedded in one of the projects that are already called out in the prioritization plan. But what I think we can also do is just add that and then when we bring it back for a future discussion on the, you know, Board of Supervisors meeting, if Dave Magricker is not, oh, it appears he is available, but he can even provide, contextualize what the work involved might look like and if it is in another project or if it's not. And then we can also get that prioritized. But I'll yield to Dave Magricker right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, good evening.
Good evening.
As I recall, when we discussed this with Ron Seibert at a previous meeting, it is indicated as a priority. It may even be a Priority One. It's just that there's a lot of Priority Ones. So it's almost, how do we prioritize within everything that's called a Priority One?
I'll be darned. Okay.
So in terms of low-hanging fruit, it's more maybe staff labor-intensive, just to do the study and then, you know, establish the ordinances, paint the stalls, set the signs, and if you'd like areas that people are not to park, you know, the curb painted yellow, we could do that. That's not something we've done in other locations, but, you know, certainly that might help folks know where to park and not to park. And then we would just include that in our ongoing, you know, line painting contract every year.
Oh, that sounds great. That end part sounds great. Thank you, Dave. So, quick question about providing the resources for that then. I heard you talk about staff time. I know sometimes like, and it's CIP season, so that's why I'm continuing to ask this question. Sometimes it's helpful to have a consultant. Is this one of those cases where if it was really a Priority One, double A, highest of the high Priority One priorities, that if the board wanted to fund that, that we would go to a consultant? Or is that probably not an appropriate project for something like that?
If it's a very high priority, something like that, we would probably just do ourselves.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, thanks.
Yep.
All right. I think that's all I had, so anything else?
No, tonight we were just looking for your review and any comments. We'll add it back to a future meeting. And then once we have it established and considered, you know, in its final state, we'll then have the policy items as part of the manager's report with kind of the interest in having it serve as a dashboard where we have ongoing comments as well as identifying if it's in progress, complete, or not yet initiated.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Okay, wonderful. Next up, continued discussion on our DEI calendar. And that'll be introduced by Assistant Manager James Progar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution establishing the Agenda Order of Business for 2022, which included the addition of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Special Report Item. At the June 21st regular meeting, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to prepare a draft Diversity and Cultural Celebrations Calendar. Proposed calendar would be featured on the Township's website with a submission request form to feature local cultural events. The Board is asked now to consider the draft Diversity, Holiday, and Cultural Celebrations Calendar provided with the agenda for staff to reference and add to the DEI Special Report Item all diversity, ethnic holidays, and cultural celebration calendar items. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, and thanks so much for working on this. All right, any comments or thoughts?
I did. So when I looked at it, I noticed that February was missing the Chinese Lunar New Year, which we usually recognize every year. And I think President's Day wasn't on there as one of those asterisk holidays.
Asterisk days, okay. Good, good call.
Yeah, we'll be happy to add that.
Thank you. Sure, take your time, take your time. No problem.
Thank you. And I'll just take this time while Supervisor Williams is looking through. You know, just to kind of refresh the board with the concept that we were having and still have, you know, ongoing requests and interest to have, you know, whether cultural or celebratory items recognized and whether they come in as requests for proclamations or just moments of silence. We wanted to try and perhaps find ways to be ahead of it in terms of proactive method. So the idea with this is that we'll put this in front of the board tonight. Please review, make suggestions for additions to the calendar. Once the board, you know, and of course, we can put this on for a future agenda item to have it finalized, for the board to officially motion to accept the calendar. And then what staff will do with this calendar is we'll go ahead and populate our website community calendar with these items. We'll also have for the, every regular meeting agenda, we'll identify any type of diversity, equity, and inclusion item that's already been identified and accepted and approved by the board. So we'll always have that item to give recognition and that the board celebrates that particular item as it's approved in this calendar. So we're doing it here in July, August of 2022. The idea though is that this will also be presented to the board at the beginning of each year. So you'll proactively adopt your Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion calendar. And we'll populate it for each year to come at the beginning of the year.
Continuous review annually.
Correct. Thank you.
This is the first pass.
Right, thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, there's a couple things that I, can you guys hear me? Okay, there's a couple things that I didn't see that I wanted to suggest. And this is just from my list right now. I don't know where my other notebook is. But July is Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. August is Black August.
Sorry, I have to reply. I promise you I will, like tomorrow.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. I just know that I just recently.
You did, you did, you did.
So I want to do that. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in December, I do not see Kwanzaa nor Hanukkah. And I also do not see Ramadan or Diwali anywhere either.
So we can, thank you Supervisor Williams, we can go ahead and add that if all is in favor. And then of course, we'll have this list that we'll bring back to the board at a future meeting. We'll plan for August and we'll actually hopefully have it back to you in August and then we can.
As possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible is really what I'm saying. And then we'll look to the board to approve that calendar and then that'll be how the township recognizes these celebrations. Thank you, thank you.
And when and what time should we decide whether or not a proclamation should be made versus something just being recognized?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Staff will continue to accept requests for proclamations. You know, that process goes to the chair. The chair, you know, if I'm not already copied on that email with that request, the chair will then communicate that request to me and then we put it in for the, you know, it'll either come in as a consent agenda item initially and then be put on for discussion or it'll come in maybe through the community in the same fashion, only through the citizens' request to be heard as per ARPA Home Rule Charter, which is if a community member requests, then it is on their next regular meeting agenda within seven to 10 days, I believe. We just recently did a news story that's on our website to.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, clearly establish how a community, a citizen can get an item on the agenda.
So there's a little bit of a different process for the board versus citizen, but they, both groups can get items on the agenda. It's just, it's important to plan way more ahead than you think you need to. Like if it's like in May, like, what's two months before that, March? Yeah, start in March because, you know, it's so, no matter who you are, it's just very helpful and it's more likely it'll be acknowledged before it than like after it, which has on occasion occurred. But those consent agenda process and then for the public, those processes so that it has been written up. Thank you. I just had a few comments on content. Also, I don't know, I might have missed these things. I'm sorry, I really sped through this document. Is Arbor Day in there? It's in there. Okay. How about Dark Sky Month Week, some sort of a dark sky?
That is not.
Okay, could we add that? I'm just sort of thinking of a few green, like green things that may not be in there that I'll follow up with. And then do we want to do anything like Grange Week? You know, we have a big agricultural presence and we have a Grange and isn't that a thing, Grange Week?
With Grange Fair?
Well, okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of. Isn't there some sort of a national, it seems like there would be a national acknowledgement of the Grange.
There is, but I do not know it.
Okay. Anyway, just maybe just looking into something maybe like of that nature.
We do have, March is agriculture.
Oh, there it is. There it is. Fantastic. Okay. I really didn't have a heck of a lot of comment there then, did I? Okay. Thanks so much. It'll be back on our agenda again for adoption and then again for annual review and adoption. Wonderful. Thank you so much for your work. A great document.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Lot for Sale on Blue Course Drive. This will be introduced by Ms. Martin.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. At a regular meeting held on April 5th of this year, the board motioned to direct staff to investigate the property and present a cost-benefit analysis for the lot for sale on Blue Course Drive. The cost-benefit analysis was, one was received by Mick Tromley, who is the agent for the seller, as staff received it earlier this year. As the board may recall, that we went into, we held an exec session to discuss this further with staff and staff is now looking for direction and we would like to present this back on the agenda for your consideration on how best to move forward.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I rise to a question of privilege impacting the assembly.
State your question.
Could the board go into executive session to discuss the lot for sale on Blue Course Drive? At the time, at this time?
Yes. Sorry, we're just, it seems stiff because we're working on our robbers. So right now we're recess, we're going to executive session based on this. All right, so here we are in hybrid. We're going to move to the next room.
Yes, we'll return in 20 minutes.
Okay, we'll be back in 20. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, nicely done. Are we able to pause, James, on the hybrid meeting here? All right. We will head on over.
James has to go too, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Someone, someone I know.
Okay, all set, everyone? Okay, now we reconvene the public session of this Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Now that the Board has further discussed in an executive session the topic of the Lot for Sale on Blue Course, what is the pleasure of the Board?
I move that the Board of Supervisors move to authorize that the Township manager make an offer to the seller in an amount that does not exceed $24,000.
I second. This is Patty, I second.
Thank you. All right, any questions? All right, all in favor? Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad. Is the property sale a roll call?
And. The sale is not taking place, Madam Chair. This is just authorizing the Township manager to take action.
Sorry, sorry, I had a moment. All right, all right, yes, back to the voice vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign? All right, great, thank you. And moving on, we are up to the Minor Land Development Plan of Nittany Dental, introduced by Ms. Jenna Worgo. Welcome Jenna.
Thank you. Ooh, paper. Let me know if this goes too much. So on May 18, 2022, Pantera Engineering submitted a minor land development plan on behalf of their client, B&amp;H West College Investments. This proposal is located at 2591 Park Center Boulevard and zoned light industry research and development. This minor land development plan proposes the enclosure of three existing drive-through lanes, about 1,200 square feet, and enlarging that space by an additional 360 square feet. So the final square footage for this addition would increase the building coverage from 5,100 square feet to 6,700 square feet. The applicant would need to provide six additional parking spaces for the addition and the change in use, equalling 27 total parking spaces required by ordinance. There are currently 44 parking spaces existing on site. 2022 meeting to allow this plan to be processed as a minor land development plan. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors at their July 11th, 2022 meeting. Staff has reviewed the minor land development plan and is recommending approval subject to the outstanding staff comments as outlined in my memorandum dated July 12th, 2022. And we also included the minor land development plan in the agenda. Staff's recommendations that the Board of Supervisors conditionally approve the minor land development plan.
Thank you so much. There is a motion found in your agenda.
This is Patty. This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors conditionally approve the Nittany Dental Minor Land Development Plan, subject to the conditions as outlined in the Director of Planning and Zoning memorandum dated July 12th, 2022.
This is Tiara, I second that motion.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And moving on to Final Land Development Plan, Center Animal Veterinary Hospital, introduced by Jenna Worgo.
Thank you. On June 15th, 2022, E.L.A. Group Inc.'s submitted a final land development plan on behalf of their client, Tussie Traxx LLC. This proposal is located at 1518 West College Avenue and its own terrace streetscape. This land development plan proposes a 620-square-foot addition to the existing 500-square-foot building. The owner recently acquired the parcel to the east, consolidated the lots, to create a larger lot to expand the parking and reconfigure that for better flow. April 5th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting, the board granted a modification waiver request from 225 A.O. 9 Streetscape Design Standards. The preliminary land development plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors at the April 19th, 2022 meeting pending outstanding staff comments. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors at their July 11th, 2022 meeting. Staff has reviewed the final land development plan and is recommending approval subject to the outstanding comments as outlined in my memorandum dated July 12th, 2022. Staff's recommendations that the Board of Supervisors conditionally approve the final land development plan.
Thank you, Jenna. Right, you'll find a recommended motion in your agenda.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors conditionally approve the Center Animal Fine Land Development Plan, subject to the conditions as outlined in the Director of Planning and Zoning's memorandum dated July 12th, 2022.
This is Tiara, I second that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And motion passes unanimously. Next up, continue. Sorry, one second. Continued discussion, draft of the amendment to Chapter 16, Park and Recreation, introduced by Ms. Jenna Worgo.
All right. March 2022, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance 1076 that captured outstanding amendments from the Township's comprehensive update to the zoning and subdivision land development ordinances. At the March 15th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting, the board requested an additional review of Chapter 16, Parks and Recreation, for consistency with the amendments made to Chapter 27, 723, Mobile Food Vendors. Provided with the agenda is a redlined draft amendment to Chapter 16, Parks and Recreation, for the board to review and provide comments. Staff's recommendations that the Board of Supervisors authorize the ordinance for public hearing on August 16th, 2022.
Thank you so much. Okay. We do have a recommended motion on our team at this time.
This is Tiara. I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the advertisements of a public hearing for the amendment to Chapter 16, Parks and Recreation Ordinance on August 16th, 2022.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Do others have any questions or thoughts? Okay. Thank you so much, Jenna. Looks like it's just kicked me for any thoughts on the redlining. I think the, I only have, I only have one thought, and it may be, it may be that you've already had this thought, and it's for a future thought in our next iteration of revision. It just, it's more a little bit about an awkwardness than a question about ordinance. So that's why it may be something you want to put off. So, the question is, hang on. One moment. There it is. Okay, it's the, looks like last section. Looks like section 10, calling it 107, but I got a page cut off there, sorry. Yes, it is section 107. So, number one, there's that paragraph that talks about, I'm just, I'm gonna have to read it. It's a little bit of an, it's already a little bit of an awkward paragraph. And he, my, I'll tell you my eventual question, though, before I read it. Like, in that header paragraph, it talks about Center Region Park and Rec and the director and enumerating some things, and then it goes A, B, C, D. And that's where we added in, and/or Ferguson Township, which I recommended and supported. But now I'm just wanting to get maybe, is there a way we can make that header a little less awkward than with A, B, C, D? I don't know that there is, but that's, that's, that's my question. And I also don't want to really hold things up. But, but I'm gonna read the paragraph now, just to bring everybody along with us. And then this is my only item, and we'll, we'll move right along. Okay, so the paragraph is, number one, "In order to provide for equitable use of park facilities, preserve park areas and facilities, and protect the safety of users of the parks and their facilities, the Director of CRPR shall have the following authority, the enumeration of which shall not restrict the general authority and control of the Director over parks." So... What we're saying there in that header, under which we then say one thing is to restrict use, to designate parks, parks and parts thereof as restricted to the use of certain portions of the public at certain times as the Director sees fit, not to adversely limit allowances as provided in the Township Codes of Ordinances or permitted by Ferguson Township. Well, I guess, I guess that, I guess as I read through it, I guess it does, it does work. It does work there, because it's not with the issuing of, of permits. But there underneath is issuing a per, so, so do you see how the Director has these things, these, these responsibilities, and under C to issue permits, under uniform conditions to be described, prescribed by the Director or Ferguson Township? So we're not actually then saying we're issuing permits. We're saying that the Director of the CRPR can issue the permits under the conditions that we ascribe? Is that, does any, then, does anywhere in this section or any other section specifically say we can issue the permit? I guess I thought maybe that did, and now I'm, I'm sorry.
For explicitly issuing permits, I think it's that B part of above, permitted by Ferguson Township, I would be issuing permits for them. I think one of the biggest issues James and I had was solely focusing on amendments related to food trucks. I think this whole chapter, there's a lot of opportunity for
Okay.
a lot of amendments.
Cool. Cool. This, this will then suffice at this point in time. So as long as, we're all seeing that same thing, I'm trying, I'm just trying to get it, okay. All right, I thought probably so. Okay. Fantastic. Thanks for indulging me with that, that moment. So, let's see here. We have the motion on the table. Quick question then about the future, before I call for a vote on this, based on that previous discussion. I'm, I feel like I, with my attention to this, am almost ready to embark on that, even though the work at the regional level's not done. I don't anticipate that being done for a year. So I think that, given this ordinance, what I read in it, and the, it's actually not all that related to our work, I think, I think we can revise it to be a lot better, and then make any minor amendments that would result out of that governance committee, is I think what my point is. So, what would our timeline, do we think, and you don't have to answer now, in terms of priorities, what do we think, when do we think we might see this back for a more comprehensive revision, like the police officer thing and everything like that?
Yeah. Yeah, Madam Chair, I think that we could probably bring this back, maybe in Septem, well, it's pretty soon. I guess the question here is, are you asking to bring this back with a recommendation from the ad hoc committee that we have yet to organize? Or are you asking for this to come back prior to organizing the ad hoc committee where we do have?
Post-ad hoc.
Post-ad hoc.
Yeah.
I would, to be very conservative with my timeline. You know, I want to say November.
You don't have to even answer. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and you wouldn't even have to answer, but that's about what I was thinking.
Let's tentatively plan for November, and if I'm finding that the work plan
Yeah.
doesn't have that, well, I'll provide an update in my manager's report, and if the board wants to bring that back for discussion, then we can do that, if that sounds good.
Wonderful, thanks. Okay, wonderful. Ready for a vote? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you very much to staff for your work on this. We are up to our new business. Oh, I'm sorry, I think I, did I skip something?
You skipped the consent agenda.
Okay, no, all right, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
We are to new business, and it is the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report and approve the consent agenda.
This is Tiara. I move that we accept the consent agenda and approve the May treasurer's report.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We're on to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to execute an agreement with, oh, this is a hard name, Zelenovsky Axle Rod.
Zell, yes.
Provide technical assistance and guidance for adherence to the mandated policies, procedures, and accountability as a recipient of the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Program, introduced by Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, and was mentioned earlier in our report by Baker Tilly, the township has received the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, a partial payment in the amount of approximately $1 million. Those funds, while they have been allocated and are able to be identified in the current 2022 operating budget, they have not yet been spent. And we also anticipate another, a second disbursement, if not by the end of July, perhaps early August. And when we, when the, when the township does receive that second payment, our disbursement of relief funds, staff will organize a work session for the board to discuss proposed projects or items to which the board may want to consider, but ultimately act on how you would like to have those funds committed. What staff is most comfortable with acknowledging is that, sure, we need to have all of the funds that are received through this relief program by, allocated in our budget by 2024. We need to have those funds spent by 2026. We also acknowledge that there's a considerable amount of required regulations, regulations that require compliance with reporting. And while staff certainly maintains up-to-date information, information is accessible, that is not the issue, it's really just trying to stay above and be proactive. There's certain ways to which we can spend that will determine if we need a single audit or a multiple type of audit, and there are all these different types of things that staff shall consider. And as previously discussed in our special meeting, our finance and tax director, while quite, you know, very, very good at what he does, he's also occasionally our IT director, he's our IT support person, but he, you know, he ultimately is our finance and tax director, and so we do have support. Recently, recommended by the Township Solicitor, this group, Zelenkovsky Axle Rod. They are a public certified accountant firm that decided to take some time to become specialized and, and serve as an expert to municipalities on how to ensure that compliance and all regulations are being met. Center County Commissioners also engaged this firm, and they utilize the consultant to provide assistance. And her, the representative that I met with, her name is Ms. Kimberly Stink, she has also offered, as you can find in the agreement, to provide assistance at our future work sessions, so as the board's discussing projects, she'll be available to identify, yes, this is an eligible project, it's not an eligible project, et cetera. She's also provide, she'll also be available to provide guidance on how we can perhaps maybe even be more transparent about how these funds are allocated, and as staff is dispersing payments on spending our relief funds on certain projects, providing a mechanism and tools as to how we can keep that as transparent and accessible on our, in a, in a format, to which, sure, yes, staff could do it, but right now staff is also managing quite, quite a lot. So, in front of you this evening is a resolution to authorize the township manager to execute this agreement. I will note that while we did not have this in the 2022 operating budget, it is below, significantly below the, the contract award amount. And it also is a expenditure that will be charged to the relief funds that the township is receiving, so. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public for any comments. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask that a board member offer a motion for us to consider.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors conduct a public hearing and direct the township manager to execute an agreement with, oh, boy, Zelenkovsky Axle Rod for their services, as described in accordance with the agreement provided with the agenda.
Thank you.
This is Tiara, I second that motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'm glad we're doing this, this is good, I'm glad we're getting this guidance. I think that they're, they're planning, you know, like what you were saying about best ways to spend in, in the time periods, priceless, so I'm glad we're doing this, so. All right. This is a, is this a resolution? No.
Yes, yes it is. It is a roll call vote.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So this is a roll call vote, Resolution 2022-16. Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, approving the naming of Volos Lane to improve and enhance the response of emergency services personnel for properties located on the lane. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to look to Director of Planning and Zoning, Jenna Worgo, to introduce this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a copied resolution approving the naming of Volos Lane as a private street. On June 3rd, 2022, Albert Droppus submitted a minor land development plan on behalf of his client, Ryan DiMakopolis. The parcel is located at 296 West Pine Grove Road and zoned rural residential. The parcel is 19.96 acres, and the applicant's proposing to construct a second residential home on the lot. Resolution number 27-8 designates Board of Supervisors with the authority to approve naming of lanes, roads, and streets in the township adhering to the Center County 901 Street and Road naming criteria when two or more structures sharing the road requires naming. On approval of naming of this private street, staff will order an erected private street sign for Volos Lane to improve response by public safety and emergency services to the existing and proposed residents utilizing Volos Lane as their primary access. the existing and proposed residents utilizing Volos Lane as their primary access. Staff's recommendations that the Board Supervisors adopt the resolution.
Sorry, thank you very much. Yes, and this is also a public hearing, so I'll open this up to any public comment. All right, seeing none, close the public hearing, and would entertain a motion found in your agenda.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution approving the naming of Volos Lane as a private street in Ferguson Township.
This is Tiara, second that motion.
Thank you. Comments, questions? All right, this will be a roll call vote, so Ms. Martin, roll call.
It'll be Resolution 2022-17. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Dinini?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, next up, acceptance of Hillary Caldwell's resignation from the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Introduced by Ms. Martin. Keeping you busy this evening.
Yes, thank you. So provided, thank you, Madam Chair, provided with the agenda is a copy of a letter submitted by Ms. Hillary Caldwell resigning from the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Per Ms. Caldwell's letter, the effective date of her resignation was Friday, July 8, 2022. The board is required to take action, excuse me, to accept Ms. Caldwell's resignation and initiate a process to identify an appointee to fill the vacancy until the end of term, which is December 31, 2023. Also provided with the agenda is a memorandum from myself that outlines the vacancy, describing the process with a timeline for appoint, or filling the vacant seat, which is in Ward 2.
Thank you so much. All right, you've got a motion recommended in the agenda.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors accept Ms. Hillary Caldwell's resignation effective Friday, July 8, 2022.
This is Tiara Williams, I second that motion.
Thank you. All right, and thank you, Ms. Caldwell, for your service. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And motion passes unanimously. Next up, authorization for Township Manager to execute agreement with GOV-HR to assist with the recruitment of Chief of Police.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, provided with the agenda is a, is a proposed contract with GOV-HR USA to conduct the executive recruitment for the position of Chief of Police here at Ferguson Township. The township used the firm to recruit Chief Albright and your Township Manager, and is recommended, and I am recommending that GOV-HR USA also facilitate this recruitment. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks. Shall we entertain the motion?
This is Tiara. I recommend that the Board of Supervisors award a contract to GOV-HR USA to conduct a recruitment for the Ferguson Township Chief of Police.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Thank you for leading the effort on this, Sentries. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, authorization to enter agreement with HammerTech for a security and vulnerability assessment. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the 2022 operating budget allocates funding to facilitate a cybersecurity test of the township's network and information technology infrastructure. The Township Manager, Assistant Township Manager, and Finance and Tax Director met with a representative who joins the board this evening here at our regular meeting, Mr. Anthony Cartolaro, I hope I pronounced that correctly, thank you, but he joins us this evening to, of course, answer any questions the board may have. He is representing HammerTech, which is a division of Wyden Hammer, to discuss, and we met with him to discuss and explore the services that they provide. This firm, I also want to bring to your attention and note that they conducted the cybersecurity assessment with the, of the COGS IT network infrastructure, and having had a chance to be able to review the deliverable, I was, I was very impressed, and I thought that this would be a great opportunity for at least the conversation, and following a conversation that I had, I was, I was rather impressed that we were going to be able to get the same deliverable and the same scope of work for what we already had budgeted, and I think this will be a really great step, and I strongly recommend that we do this as, as the deliverable or the, you know, what I'm looking for in terms of not just having a better understanding of what, what we might be able to do to secure our network and our, and improve our infrastructure, but even our audio and visual upgrades that we've been discussing for months, I will be looking to HammerTech to provide us with a little bit more detail in what we might want to include in our scope of work for our, our contract that we'll have when we decide to put that out for bid. Also, part of the scope of work that HammerTech has offered to do, in addition to doing, you know, an assessment of our IT infrastructure, which, to be quite honest with you, i- it's not just needed, but brings a sense of security for me as Township Manager, knowing that municipalities are, are targeted, and we're regularly hearing about small to mid-sized government entities that are victims of a, of a cyber attack, and quite honestly, you know, as you know, we, we facilitate a lot of information, and so being sure that we are maintaining the infrastructure, or at least being informed as to how we can improve our IT infrastructure to ensure the security and privacy of our citizens is, well, it's a great, a great concern that I think we all share. So, I'll stop there. Of course, provided with the agenda packet, you'll find not only the scope of work, the narrative is expanding a little bit more, and of course, we have a representative here to answer questions you may have, otherwise, there is a motion that is recommended in your agenda.
Thank you very much. Let's start with a motion.
This is Tiara. I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the Township Manager to enter an agreement with HammerTech for a security and vulnerabili-- vulnabili-- 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 vulnerability assessment. I don't know why I can't say that word tonight.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you much. All right, questions? I don't have any questions. I'm glad that we're doing this. Thank you for being here to answer any questions. I don't think we--
My pleasure, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
I, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say, you know, as a, someone who has been affected by a zone bombings and things like that, I think this is very important with the hybrid way we're moving towards, and I appreciate this.
Thank you, thank you. And after my participation with the COG and this company, yep, I know the kind of work that they do, and I very much appreciate their services being applied to the township. So, thank you. All right.
Thank you all.
Did we vote? We did not vote. Okay, all right, so all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And motion passes unanimously. Next up, minor land development plan for sidewalk construction, 165 Volos Lane, introduced by Ms. Worgo.
Thank you. June 3, 2022, Albert Dropka submitted a minor land development plan on behalf of his client, Ryan Dimakopoulos. Parcel is located at 296 West Pine Grove Road and zoned rural residential. Parcel is 19.96 acres, and the applicant is proposing to construct a second residential home on the lot. Chapter 22, Section 5121D requires the Board of Supervisors to determine if sidewalks are required to be installed on the properties within the RR zoning district. Including the agenda packet is the proposed minor land development plan, a sidewalk map of Pine Grove Mills, an aerial image of the property and neighboring properties, and a Google Street View image of the property. The Board of Supervisors being asked to review the provided materials and determine if sidewalks should be constructed along the property fronting West Pine Grove Road. Planning Commission reviewed the request at the July 11 meeting and recommended not to require the construction of sidewalks at this time. Staff's recommendations that the Board of Supervisors not require the construction of sidewalks along the property fronting West Pine Grove Road. Chapter 21, Section 201, Streets and Sidewalks includes provisions for the Board of Supervisors to require construction of sidewalks on any public highway of the township or adjacent to any public highway of the township.
Thank you, Jenna. Before I entertain a motion, I have a question for you. I tried, I tried to discern the answer to my question, and I, I couldn't. Jenna, could you just tell me where this sidewalk would be, is it, would it be along Pine Grove Road? That doesn't make sense, right? It's internal, it's somewhere internal that the public would never be. Is that, can you help me understand?
Yeah, let me find it. So, in essence, this lot is similar to the shape of a flag lot. So we'd be talking about the pole that is directly fronting West Pine Grove Road, not the private Volos Lane that the board just named. And given that the residential homes that are also abutting West Pine Grove Road that buffer this property directly from the road, those will never see land development, which would require that sidewalk installation. So, the reason why staff pointed to Chapter 21 Streets and Sidewalks is because at any point in time, the board can require sidewalks to be installed along all of these properties. And staff and Planning Commission understand that we are trying to improve connectivity of the zoning district, and by waiting this now, the board isn't giving up their ability to require this at a later time, essentially.
Thanks, Jenna. That requirement at a later time, just for a little, like, just like a reality check on what's in the book versus what actually happens in reality, is like, the board, any board almost never, ever goes back and requires that post-land development because of the investment that's required that then isn't like funded by the land development loan. So like, that, even when there's a dangerous, sort of semi-dangerous situation where there's kids that have to go onto a street as opposed to going on the sidewalk when there's a gap, sometimes we don't force the property owner to install the sidewalk, because then they incur this debt of, I think it's like, can be tens of thousands of dollars. So, so I guess, I, I was sure in my mind that this couldn't possibly be a sidewalk along Pine Grove Road, because I know that the board definitely wants, I mean, the mobility study, could we just, I'm sorry to delay us, but could we just pop up a map of where in, on Pine Grove Road this not sidewalk will be? And don't, all of those houses have sidewalks in front of them along Pine Grove Road? I'm sorry. Yeah.
So this, the lot in red is the lot that we are discussing today. So the portion that would need the sidewalk is this.
Is that--
So we have the existing sidewalks in Pine Grove Mills, that's in the yellow. We can see that they stop at the beginning of the church parking lot here. And then all of these properties that are directly abutting West College, those are all single-family homes, zoning wise, they-- to get to the land development process. So unless we were to require them to install sidewalks, we would just have a sliver of sidewalk right here.
I guess I am seeing that as a more of a half, glass half-full than a glass half-empty situation, because that's in that length where we are really desperate to have safe off-road pedestrian flow. So, I understand that it's not directly connected to the yellow, just a block down, but the place where, I mean, not, and also not that we want to cross-road, but I know in our future strategy of connectivity out there, we actually prefer a cross-road mechanism somewhere because of the preserved farmage. So, what I'm wondering is if in the futurescape, that cross-road connects with that area and that needs, that wants to have a sidewalk right there. So, I actually, I don't want to deny it, but I don't want to approve it, and there's only three of us, so I would, can we, can we table this? Is this within the deadline? Is there, what's the deadline? Okay. We're, we're okay with deadlines if we can table this and get the answer to that as opposed to motion failing?
Yes.
Okay.
You can table it, and we can bring it back as a tabled item.
Because I'm going to vote no right now, because I'm unsure, so that means it'll fail if we don't table it. So why don't we table it and get our answers, get some answers?
This is Patty. Motion to table this until a later date.
This is Tiara, second that.
Do we need--
The board, if you have a specific date in mind, it would be ideal for you to share that.
Our next meeting. I motion to table this till our next meeting, please.
This is Tiara, second that motion.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, thank you.
Can I ask, Madam Chair, you, you said you wanted some additional information. Can you provide specifically to staff what information you seek so we can get that included in the next agenda? Thank you.
So, when we talked about a bike path, connectivity out that way, there was sort of like a, not set in stone by any means, but like an idea of where that pathway would be if we eventually had an off-road path. So out in West Ferguson, a lot of times, what we need to support is the preserved farms. So, we don't want to do a taking on them, we're questioning whether we really can, and we certainly don't want to. So, to get out that way, to connect the Ross Street neighborhood, which is like the end of the Pine Grove Mills small area planning area that we want to connect with all the neighborhoods, their population centers, I believe that there's, between that church, which is just across the street, like where the sidewalk ends on the other side of that church, which is across the street from there, from there to Ross Street, there is a proposed thought about how that pathway would go. I'm wondering if that's a link of that, or if the proposal is for the other side of the street? Like, where is the thought of where that pathway goes? Because if we're not intending to go on that side of that road, then correct, that sidewalk will never exist. If we are intending on going on that side of the road, then that sidewalk would want to exist, so.
All right, thank you. Yes, staff can further look into that.
There's like a gully, a big gully. Okay, thanks. Thank you so much. All right, request, next up, request for zoning variances, introduced by Jenna Worgo. First up, 112 Timothy Lane.
On June 27, Clearwater Conservancy submitted an application request for a variance at 112 Timothy Lane, Pennsylvania Furnace, on behalf of property owners Jim and Ellie Herman. Property is zoned rural residential, and the applicant is requesting a variance from 277013C1 and 277013CI floodplain conservation to permit the applicant to plant native trees and shrubs within the 50-foot natural buffer of permitted use and on the edge of a floodplain. Staff's recommendations that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the variance request.
Thank you, Jenna. I'll entertain the motion.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the request for a variance for 112 Timothy Lane.
This is Tiara, second that.
Thanks. I was questioning whether I wanted to entertain the motion, because I, I just, I have, I thought maybe we wanted to support the request for the variance, because the way I'm understanding this is that we're charging Clearwater Conservancy like $250 to apply for a variance so they can plant trees and shrubs in the floodplain to establish a buffer? And we want to encourage this kind of, this is not the same idea as encroachment of a patio or a parking lot, which we want to discourage. This is a thing we want to encourage, but for some reason, our regulatory framework doesn't recognize that. So, it's, it's, for me, I would put this on the list of things to do, like, why would our, why would our regulatory framework not encourage planting trees and shrubs within a, within a floodplain buffer? So if we're defining them as man-made, maybe we just need to put in the definition of wherever it's defined that buffer plantings will not be considered encroachment, or like, whatever definitional thing that we can do to avoid this in the future would be great. So, you know, I know we have a trillion things to do on our list, but again, you know, we have a ton of water here in Ferguson, we protect the water for the region, it's just, anyway, it's important. So we've got, we've got just a motion to remain neutral, but hopefully-- So we've got, uh, we've got just a motion to remain neutral, um, but hopefully we can in the future not need a variance at all, so. All right, um, all in favor of the motion to remain neutral?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, Jenna, same story, 114 Timothy Lane. Take it away.
Yep, so this is a neighboring property because they're owned by two different, uh, property owners. They are separate zoning hearing board hearings. So this property is owned by Todd and Laura Merritt, its own rural residential, the same, um, variances are being seized to this property as well. I can provide some context on our ordinance, and that's what we would need to do in order to get around these issues as an ordinance amendment to floodplain conservation. Essentially, it prohibits any development in that floodplain area, and then development within zoning is defined as any manmade change. And that is essentially where the zoning officer is holding it to, uh, any manmade changes, whether it's for the benefit or whatever it may be, they cannot be done in the floodplain.
Thanks. Yeah, I figured there was definitely a re, like a reason, but like, do you see like that there'd be a relatively easy fix to that, like a definitional change, or there's-
I thought the same thing when it was brought to my attention. I was like, can you not work with arborists? And we can come up with a good conclusion, 'cause we do permit orchards, we permit farming in the floodplains. Like, there are other activities that are similar to this one, but I was trying to see if I could sway the zoning officer, but we are at no development, no manmade changes.
Did you say we allow orchards in a floodplain, but not tree planting in a floodplain?
Correct.
How, if you have an orchard in the floodplain, but you can't plant a tree in a floodplain, how do you have an orchard in a-
I think my understanding of that part of the ordinance is solely related to protecting that agricultural use.
So if Clearwater was planting nut trees, they wouldn't have had to apply for a variance?
Uh, if they were planting an orchard, uh, I think it would have been permitted. I can double-check that one. That's why I found it fascinating that we do allow certain activities within the floodplain zone, but no development.
Okay, so like, if they were planting service berry trees, they wouldn't have had to apply for, for a variance?
Based on staff's interpretation.
Cause it's fruit hard. Okay, all right, okay, 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 okay. All right, so let's entertain the motion.
Uh, this is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the request for a variance at 114 Timothy Lane.
This is Ciara. Second that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and yes, let's definitely look at that language whenever time permits. All right, communications to the board.
Uh, we have one more.
Oh, did I skip right over something? Sorry. Um, yep, 221 Grace Court. Jenna, you're up again.
June 21st, 2022, Quinton Byra submitted an application request for a variance at 221 Grace Court. This property is zoned single-family residential, and the applicant is requesting a variance from 27209 yard requirements to permit a structure within 17 feet of the rear property line. And staff's recommendations that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the variance request.
Entertain the motion.
Mrs. Patty, I move that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the request for a variance at 221 Grace Court.
This is Ciara. Second that motion.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, and we're on to communications to the board. Anything anyone would care to share? All right, seeing none, moving on to calendar items. Um, 45 Getaways kicks off July 30th. Um, there's gonna be a municipal mixer August 3rd, uh, so those interested in the Greenbrier Stabrook Park Master Planning Process should definitely get involved with that. Um, and the Ferguson Township Police Department will be at the Pine Grove Mills Farmer's Market. Is that this week? That's this week. Um, that's all I've got here to highlight. There's nothing else. We're ready for-
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Didn't want to, didn't want to rush it in case Ciara had, she looked like she might have been ruined on this either.